Good evening, and welcome to the March 19th Durango City Council Meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bettine?
Here.
Counselor Brookie?
Here.
Counselor White?
Here.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Marbury?
Here. And I'm going to begin tonight with a proclamation on Development Disabilities Awareness Month. And accepting this award is Ellen Stein and Liz Mora. Would you come to the podium, please? Yes, please. Whereas more than 7 million Americans live with an intellectual or developmental disability, ADD, like cerebral palsy, autism, and Down's Syndrome, including an estimated 56,800 to 113,600 Colorado citizens. And whereas people with ADD incur their disabilities during the developmental period or before the age of 22. And most people with ADD need support of some kind throughout their entire lifespan. And whereas the two organizations serving children, adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families in South Smith, Colorado, five counties that include Durango and La Plata County are Community Connections since 1985 and the Ark of Southwest Colorado since 2014. And whereas Community -- sorry, I can't talk. Whereas Community Connections serves 123 children and adults in Durango, and the Ark of Southwest Colorado serves 31 children, in addition to those individuals who live and function outside a formal service system or who are waiting for services. And whereas both organizations believe that all people have inherent value and with innate abilities and strengths and are equal before the law. And individuals living with a developmental disability deserve to have the same opportunities to live, learn, love, work, and play in their communities with the dignity, choices, and responsibilities accorded to all citizens. And whereas the city of Durango and La Plata County residents with developmental disabilities are able to live self-determined and meaningful lives due to supports provided by family members, direct support professionals at local community center boards like Community Connections, and organizations like the Ark of Southwest Colorado. And whereas historically, people with ADD were largely segregated in institutions, and today they continue to experience significant barriers to integration, employment, healthcare, education, housing, and other aspects of community life compared to people without disabilities. And whereas March is Developmental Disability Awareness Month, and public awareness and education enhance a community's understanding of its members living with an intellectual or developmental disability and becoming fully integrated into their community. And whereas there is a significant demand across Colorado for support for individuals with developmental disabilities and a multiple-year waiting list of 3,000 people waiting for services that includes individuals in Durango. Now therefore, I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And accepting will be Liz Mora and Ellen Stein. And Molly, thank you. Come to the podium, please.
My name is Molly Hanson. I am 40 years old. I was born with a brain disability. I have lived in Durango for two years. I live with my cat in a townhouse and have helpers from Community Connections. I want to speak for the people who can't speak for themselves. I am a good advocate for myself. I used to speak at the Wisconsin State Capitol. Liz at the Ark and Martha at the Southwest Center for Independent helped me in the community. I have worked in a lot of places in my life. I worked in the billing department at the medical college for six years. I have been hard to find a job in Durango, but I almost have a job now. I am not comfortable alone, people at the transit who are homeless. They start talking to me. Please get more bus routes back for me and my friends. People are led like old fish. We should not live and work in small places like old fish in a small bowl. We will not be able to learn and grow. We need to be in the community like old fish in the big pond. Thank you for letting me speak and for listening to me.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. We are moving into the consent agenda, which is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. Ms. Fekere?
Items 4.1 and 4.2 are approval of minutes. Item 4.1 are minutes from the study session of January 22nd, 2019. Item 4.2 are minutes from the regular meeting of March 5th, 2019. Items 4.3 through 4.9 are discussion and possible action items. Item 4.3 concerns approval of the proposed 2019 vending calendar. Item 4.4 concerns appointments to the boards and commissions. Item 4.5 concerns adoption of the official city map. Item 4.6 concerns an amendment to the play plan to add the positions of deputy police chief and police services technician. Item 4.7 concerns approval of Resolution R. 201913, supporting the use of joint sales tax funds for the preparation of a homeless plan in cooperation with La Plata County. Item 4.8 concerns Resolution R. 201914, re-establishing the Finance Committee. Item 4.9 concerns Resolution R. 201915, repealing Resolution R. 201610 and establishing the Creative Economy Commission. Item 4.10 is a request for a public hearing to consider land use and development code text amendments to update the sign code with a proposed hearing date of April 2nd, 2019. And items 4.11 and 4.12 are final approval of ordinances. Item 4.11 is Ordinance O. 20198, amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by repealing and reenacting Article 3-6 Signs and by the amendment of and addition to portions of the code related to signs and declaring an effective date. Item 4.12 is Ordinance O. 20199, vacating and abandoning a portion of the public right-of-way on 28th Street and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Would any city councilor like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove 4.8.
4.8. I will look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 4.8.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Counselor White?
Yes, I wanted to make a small suggestion about the language it has proposed for the Finance Committee. And that is the -- and there's a -- in the list of purposes of the Finance -- or number three in the definition of the Finance Committee, it says the mayor and mayor protem shall be members of the committee. I think for -- to be absolutely clear, it should seek voting members. And then in number five, the city council may appoint a council member as a non-voting council liaison to the commission. I think that would then would should say another member, just for complete clarity about this. I would add that I think that this clearly is an issue, as the resolution clearly states, that was brought to the council by citizens in the wake of the two-way loss. And it is an effort on the part of the council to ensure the public that, in fact, the budget process is clear and that we've got citizen input. And I think that -- but at the same time, I think the putting to the new council to make the appointments to the commission, I think, is totally appropriate.
Any discussion?
I would make that a motion to add in Clause 3, make that voting members, and in Clause 5, another member of the council as a non-voting liaison.
If that motion is made, I'll second that motion.
And roll call, please.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. We are moving into public hearings, and I wanted to ask the city council, I would like to move 8.1.2, a public hearing to consider renaming Santa Rita Drive to Larry Valdez Way. I would like to move it up.
I still move.
A second?
Second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And I would ask Kevin Hall, our director of planning, to come to the podium to present this public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Councilors. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. Back in the fall of 2018, the family of Larry Valdez approached the city to inquire about naming a street after him. Mr. Valdez was a longtime resident of the community, a veteran as well. And with the work of family and Mayor Marbury and a little bit of work on staff's behalf, we've put together the proposal, which you have in your agenda packet. Essentially, we need to go through the Court of Ordinances to ensure we're renaming it appropriately. And Section 1.9 of the Court of Ordinances requires that a public hearing be held and an ordinance be considered. So what we'll have before you tonight is a conversation, both certainly from council, the family of Mr. Valdez, as well as others who may want to speak on his behalf. And I'm not going to go into the details of the new agenda doc. I think I'll let the process work itself out. And then at the end, there's a recommendation. I'm happy to come back up and reiterate that for your consideration.
Do you have a slide to show us, Mr. Hall?
Sure, I can walk you through a couple of things here. For starters, so we were talking about Santa Rita Drive being renamed to Larry Valdez Way. And this is Santa Rita Drive, which is just off of Santa Rita Park. The proposal is to rename Santa Rita Drive from State Highway 550 up to State Highway 3. And this section would then have the signage replaced. I have a couple of photos here of the roadway as well that give you a sense on State Highway 3 looking north. So we have some signage here that will be replaced. Now here's a view looking to the west down Santa Rita Drive. Never would lovelier. And then down here at Highway 550 looking north, again, the signage will be replaced. The Valdez family donated and collected and donated $1,500 towards the fabrication of the signs. We've had conversations with CDOT. They will be installing the signage at some point here, once the ordinance is cleared. As pointed out in the agenda doc, if there is an ordinance approved tonight, essentially you'll direct the city attorney to prepare that ordinance. It'll come back on April 2nd for its first reading. It needs a second reading, which would happen on the -- forgive me, the 16th. And then there's another 10 days before the ordinance becomes effective. So essentially, on April the 26th, it would be official. And at that point, we will work with CDOT to get the signs put up. In the meantime, we could work on the fabrication as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I was invited to speak at the Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home on October the 5th as the mayor. It was my honor. And at that time, I listened to Larry Valdez Jr. speak about his father, who was a Durango High School graduate and a Vietnam veteran. And I'm going to open up the public testimony and ask Larry Valdez Jr. to come to the podium. He lives in Denver, and he's been gracious enough to come to city council tonight to honor his father, a Durango son. And Larry Valdez Sr. won the Silver Star Award. I believe when you honor one veteran, you honor all veterans. And so, Mr. Valdez, I'm going to turn it over to you about the Silver Star announcement, please.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate being up here, and thank you, everybody that joined us up here today. I can't tell you how forward I am. You know, when I hear family, I thought, you know, it's not really my blood family. But this has become my family just as of recently, less than a year. This whole group of guys that you see here, all the vets here, have banded together and really supported me. It's been an awesome, great group of guys. I've known some longer than I've known others, but you guys are truly my family now. I appreciate it. What I'm going to read right now is what they call citation, or basically the write-up that the officer did for what my dad did in Vietnam. And I'll start reading that now. Specialist Ford Valdez distinguished himself by gallantry in action while engaged in military operations involving conflict with an armed hostile force on November 27, 1968, while serving as a cannoneer with the 5th Battalion, 2nd Artillery in the Republic of Vietnam. On this day, while proceeding to an overnight position at Bedlook Bridge, his unit of dusters was attacked by a superior force of Vietcong. And if you're not sure what a duster is, it's a tank, essentially. And he was a gunner on that tank. The vehicle on which Specialist Valdez was riding was struck by a rocket-propelled grenade round in mobile. Specialist Valdez immediately manned a machine gun and returned devastating fire upon the enemy, killing three aggressors. In spite of a withering hail of automatic weapons fire, he relinquished the protection of the gun turret in order to open the hatch to permit the driver and squad leader to disembark. He then braved the -- sorry, I just lost. He then braved the intensive fire directed at him, returned to the turret where he continued to fire upon the enemy, causing him to withdraw. Specialist Ford Valdez's courage in close combat against a superior force was in keeping with the highest traditions of the military service and reflects great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. I remember reading this as a young child. You know, my dad raised me by himself. You know, he was 32 years old, had a kid. My mom took off when I was about 16 months old. And my dad raised me all by himself. And then I didn't have a lot of things to lean on and know about my dad, because he didn't want to talk about Vietnam. He didn't talk about many of these guys. And I remember reading this over and over again, thinking, gosh, you know, what was that like to be in that situation? And, you know, when these guys banded together to tell me about what really happened there, it was truly amazing. And, you know, the only thing left that I want to say is, not only did my dad grow up here and graduate from Durango, but Santa Rita Drive is really near and dear to his heart. That's where he was literally born. You know, his mother literally burnt him down in the -- on what they used to call the flats or the Mexican barrio down there. So it's not only just fitting that he gets to have an opportunity to have a street named after him, but that's literally where his roots are. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Larry.
And I --
Mr. Aragon, would you like to come to the podium to speak to the audience and also our community? We have many Vietnam veterans in our audience tonight from all over the United States to come and honor Larry Valdez Sr., from Ignacio Bloomfield, California, our Durango boys, and I do call you our Durango boys. Mr. Aragon?
Mayor, city council, to my right, Dave Martinez, served with the 101st Airborne Division. Pete Gomez, served with the 25th Infantry Division. And I served with the 1st Calvary Division. And we're all decorated combat veterans. It's fitting that this mayor and this city council honor Larry Valdez by naming a street after him. This honor recognizes not only his heroism, but also recognizes Vietnam veterans in a unique and special way. Larry's service to our country reflects what many young men and women who were from Durango and served in Vietnam demonstrated. Honor, courage, and valor. When you read the Silver Star citation that was awarded to Larry, you should take note that Larry risked his life, not once, but twice, that night in November of 1968. His was an unselfish act that reflects a man of courage and bravery. In that period of fear and exhaustion, Larry did not falter, and he did not fail his brothers. There are men today who are and were grateful for Larry's courage under fire. Three years ago, I had an opportunity to meet one of those men. While waiting for an appointment at the VA Clinic in Los Angeles, I struck up a conversation with another veteran. We exchanged pleasantries. As we waited to be called to our respective appointments, he asked me, was I from LA? I said, no, I'm from Durango, a small town in southern Colorado. He leaned back, and he said, I was stationed with a guy from Durango. I asked him, who? He said, Larry Valdez. Man, was I surprised. I said, I knew Larry. We grew up together. This man said, I owe my life to Larry. He saved our lives. We were on a night mission when we were ambushed. Larry's duster was hit right away. He jumped up on his duster and started firing his machine gun. Once the attack slowed down, he helped his men get out of the duster and went right back to firing his machine gun. If it was not for Larry doing what he did, we would have been overrun because we were outnumbered. How Larry wasn't killed was a miracle because he faced a barrage of enemy fire. We thought he was going to get the Medal of Honor. During that battle, Larry did not stop and think, what do my brothers look like? What color, race, or languages they spoke? Or where they came from? Were they rich, or were they poor? No, he thought of them as his brothers. His actions were the truest example of humanity. You know, there's a passage in the Bible that says, God created man in his own image. We should ask ourselves, why do we all look so different? Why, in times of great peril, one rises to the occasion and does not think of differences? That night, and throughout his tour, Larry was a gallant warrior among warriors. But he had woman in his heart for his brothers. Larry did not see differences. He was willing to sacrifice his life for them. That is why he was awarded the Silver Star. The third highest medal our country gives for heroism on the field of battle. Welcome home, brother Larry. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have one more favor to ask. I asked the Durango Herald to have a photographer here, but I don't think they did. So I would like to ask all the Vietnam veterans to come in front of the dais for -- all the veterans come up here, and I'm going to get your picture. So Larry, come join the family.
Thank you, guys. You could come all the way back here, maybe so.
Thank you all for your service.
So everybody can get in. Come on in.
Going to give us a countdown of maybe three? Two, one. Thank you very much.
Okay. It'll be fun to see.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to be running against you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. I'd like to thank all the veterans that came tonight and for all of their service. It's been an honor to work on this project with our staff, and we certainly appreciate CDOT. And I'll look forward to the sign that CDOT hangs that says Larry Valdez Way. John Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. And I think we were all kids when we heard that. And your service is reflective of those powerful words that live on today. And I certainly appreciate each and every one of you for coming tonight to the city council meeting and for the fundraising that went on to honor Larry Valdez Sr. And thank you, Larry Valdez Jr., for your participation, and I hope that we have made you proud. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. You're our sister.
As they exit, I'm going to --
I believe we need a motion.
I know. I'm going to close the public testimony. I'll give them a chance.
I wasn't quite sure which way on that sheet you were going.
We were all 17, yes. They were all 17 when they left Durango.
And they wait over.
I'm going to be closing the public testimony. Are there any questions by council? If not, I will look for a motion.
I move that we approve the renaming of Santa Rita Drive to Larry Valdez Way and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance. Second?
Roll call, please.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And let me just get this computer open again. You hear the happy, happy sounds in our lobby? Thank you, Mr. Nelson. We're going to be moving into 8.1.1, a public hearing. Oh, so sorry. I'm jumping the gun there. All right, public participation. City manager, did anyone sign up to speak at public participation? Thank you, Counselor White. No. Now I'm going to go to 8.1.1, a public hearing to consider land use and development code text amendments. Miss -- very good, Ms. Van Griffin. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor, council. So this is a series of text amendments that the staff is advancing. The main first part of this presentation is creating a permanent supportive housing definition in our code. We don't have one currently, and we don't allow residential units in public zones. So we're creating this zone to help facilitate creating a permanent supportive housing project. So to begin with, we defined it. So permanent supportive housing means low barrier, non-time limited, affordable housing for residents who earn 30% of the area median income and below and are experiencing homelessness and/or have disabilities. Support services to help individuals and families lead more stable lives are also provided on the site. We are proposing this to be a limited use permit in the public zone district, but it will only be allowed at this time on the city's social services campus. And the use also must meet all the requirements of the public zone district. We did a density adjustment similar to what we did with the senior housing. So one permanent supportive housing unit, which are one-bedroom units in this case, are equal to a half of a dwelling unit. We did do reduce parking. So again, for a permanent supportive housing unit, .75 parking spaces per one-bedroom unit is the requirement. And then plus one space for every 500 square feet of office space, because in this particular case, they're going to have a lot of office space there. A little lower than our regular standards, but still to provide parking. And then we had to define what the city's social service campus is, because it's not in our code. And so it's a little wordy, but basically, we defined it as means the city -- the city-owned property accessed off of Avenue de del Sol, lists the addresses, and then it's leased to a number of social services agencies. So that is what we... That's the first part of this presentation. The second is we found when we were taking ENCODE and putting it... Or taking the ADU ordinance that was just recently passed and putting it into ENCODE, our code service, we needed to do some tweaking. So we talked to the city attorney and figured out we could do it as an add-on to this particular ordinance. So we were changing some subsections, we're reformatting and deleting some language, and then we're creating... We're reformatting some tables. So the first thing we did is under integrated ADUs, and I don't have the code citations, it probably might make a little more sense if I did, but there's a subset, subcategory called integrated accessory dwelling units. And the language in orange or yellowish here is a new language that was adopted by the council as part of the ordinance. It was just put in a different place. It was put under detached ADUs instead of integrated and the ordinance was all about integrated ADUs, so we moved it. And then we also though, because it was adopted under the detached ADUs, we kept the language, modified it a little bit. We didn't want to have to use the same materials for detached ADU, but we did want them to be compatible and we just sort of expanded on that point. We did a couple minor deletions mainly for clarity. There was a port... One place where it talked about public improvement standards and it only mentioned detached ADUs. The same public improvement standards are for attached ADUs. We didn't want that to be confusing when someone read it. So we just deleted the word detached. And then there was another section where we talked about external staircases not being allowed in 3, 4, 4, 5, and 6. That was listed under the detached ADU section, which we don't allow ADUs in 4, 5, and 6 that are detached. So we wanted to eliminate that section again just so that someone reading the ordinance wouldn't get confused because it's talking about things that can't happen. So we did both of those and then we reformatted two tables. And this is an example of what we did. These are the density intensity tables for EN 4, 5, and 6. And all we did is reformat the tables that you already adopted. And then we added the building coverage language, which was already in the code, into the table. This is very similar to all the other tables in this section of code and then moved them to the appropriate location. So that's the sum total of what we did as far as the ADU language. So we did go through the land use and development criteria and we do believe that this amendment meets all of the required criteria. And in summary, so the first part that I discussed is really to create... Is just to allow the creation of permanent supportive housing on the city's social service campus, so we need to do that. And then the second is really just to clean up that ADU language and so that when someone's reading the code, they understand it a little better than they did... They would if we put it in verbatim. The planning commission did hear this request. That's the permanent supportive housing request. At the February 25th meeting, they voted for O to recommend approval of the text amendments. You have the attachments, which is the attachment A, which is a code language approved by the planning commission and then also the proposed corrective language on ADUs. And then the staff report and minutes from February 25th. There is no fiscal impact associated with this text amendment. The proposed text amendment does comply with the comp plan and the land use and development code. And I want to explain the recommendations, it's a little long. First of all, the part in orange or yellow... It was orange when I put it on the slide. Is new language, so it's not one that's in your IP sets. So you might... So you might want to use this language when you make the motion. And that's just putting in that corrective language. And then the other thing that's different about this is it's actually directing the city attorney to do... To take this, what you're adopting tonight, and then also what you adopted on February 5th and roll both of those into one ordinance. So I'll read it to you. So it is a recommendation of the planning commission and the city council by motion, adopt the proposed land use and development code text amendments with the findings and conditions stated in the February 25th, 2019 Planning Commission staff report, and the corrective language as presented in attachment A tonight, and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance to adopt these amendments and incorporate the amendments from February 5th, 2019 for first reading at a regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public testimony. I don't believe anyone signed up. I'll close the public testimony. Any questions from city council?
I just had a comment. I just think it's worth noting that in the consent agenda, there was actually an item that somewhat relates to this. I mean, as we take a small administrative step forward to establish permanent supportive housing language within the code, we actually tonight also approved funding for a strategic plan for homelessness strategy. And that's an action we take in part with county commissioners and some joint tax dollars that we have available to us. So just wanted to update the community on those steps that are being taken in hopes that we will have some bricks and mortar solutions to the homelessness issue in the community.
Thank you very much. I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. If you can leave that up there for one second. And also make the statement, like Chris, that this is in anticipation of that long-awaited permanent supportive housing, a new type of tax credit funded housing in our community. And hopefully we can make this happen in the next year or two. So with that, I'd make a motion to adopt the proposed land use and development code text amendments with the findings and conditions stated in the February 25th, 2019 Planning Commission staff report and the corrective language as presented in attachment A, and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance and adopt these amendments and incorporate these amendments from the amendments from the February 5th, 2019 for first reading at a regularly scheduled council meeting. One second.
Roll call please.
Counselor Bettine?
Yes.
Counselor Brookie?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving into 8.2.1, a public hearing to consider a preliminary minor subdivision for Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 15. And we'll look for the staff for a report.
Mayor Marbury, I'm gonna recuse myself. I have some...
We understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marbury. I'm Mark Williams, Community Development Department. As you said, this is a preliminary minor subdivision review for Lot 15 at Twin Buttes. So just in order to provide a little background on Twin Buttes and refresh your memories, we had our original approvals at Twin Buttes in 2008, 2011. It's approved for 655 units plus another 135 ADUs. And the city tracks the number of building permits that we issue permits for. And Twin Buttes also tracks the number of houses that get built there because that 655 is a cap and it'll take several decades, a couple decades to reach it, but we know when we're getting close. There's a development agreement that governs a lot of what happens at Twin Buttes. And in that development agreement, it listed lots 15 and 16, which we're both hearing tonight, to have increased density that could be either duplexes or, as they're doing now, subdivided to create two separate lots with a house on each lot. So either way you do it, the density ends up being the same. And also Twin Buttes has its own design review committee. So the houses that get built here will go to the design review committee for approval. And one thing that's also unique about Twin Buttes is there are some really large drainage features. There's a lot of topography, as I'm sure you all know. So the city likes to keep track of exactly how much impervious coverage there is. So roads, driveways, the roofs of houses. The engineering department keeps... Or engineering division keeps track of that. So there's more or less an allotment for each lot to have a certain amount of impervious coverage. Okay, so everyone knows where Twin Buttes is, but if you don't, it's on the far west end of town. These are the areas filing 1A and filing 1B that are being developed right now. This is a little bit of an older map, but it gives you more of a feel for the neighborhood. And we're talking about Astro Lane, which is right here. And right now, Lot 15, and then across the street from Astro Lane is Lot 16. This is the main entrance where the new traffic light is. So if you've gone in, you'll recognize this location. And then a little bit closer in, this is the topography. And this is a little bit of an older... It's only a couple of years old, this aerial, but there are already quite a few houses and townhouses that have built up here. So development at Twin Buttes is starting to happen pretty quickly. This is a subdivision plat. The parent lot is about 16,000 square feet and the two new lots would be roughly 8,000 square feet each. One here, 15A, and 15B. Because we do like to keep track of the drainage, the applicant Rick Feeney submitted a drainage... A generalized drainage flow. So the drainage comes down off... Down Astro. It slopes down from the top of the map and lower, the farther south you go. And then from east to west, it flows this way. And this incidentally is the old railroad grade when there was a line over here. The railroad used this part of the grade, which Twin Buttes kept. And now it's gonna be a trail... Part of their trail system. When we do a subdivision, it's a minor subdivision, there are a total of six review criteria that they need to meet. And I'll just briefly go through all of these. The proposed subdivision is in conformance with the adopted plans and policies and standards of the LUDC. Number two is the proposed subdivision is compatible with existing or approved development of adjacent properties under the existing zoning. And it is, and as I mentioned earlier, the development agreement specifically calls out Lot 15 as being allowed to have two units or subdivision. Third criteria is not relevant. The proposed engineering solutions are sound for all major physical site features. Really drainage is the big one and that's being accounted for. The public facilities are available and adequate. We typically ask for a public improvement agreement if at least $5,000 worth of work is going to be done. It's a public-owned facility or part of a public system. So if there's the PIA that needs to be done, the applicants are already aware of that. And then probably the most unique thing about this individual application is it's on a cul-de-sac that was approved back in 2011. Since then, the city's adopted a new fire code. And that fire code actually changed the turning radius at the end of cul-de-sacs. So these are approved lots on an approved street. If they wanted to get a building permit, we couldn't deny them, but we thought this would be a good opportunity to increase or get closer to conformity with the new fire code. So we asked the applicant if they would be able to provide a turnaround at the end of... At the end of the cul-de-sac so that the larger, newer fire trucks be able to come in. And then probably the turnaround will be part of their driveway, Lot 15B. So we'll have an easement. And this is a 75-foot cul-de-sac. Fire trucks can turn in and then come out. And city service vehicles could also use that turning radius as well. So it's a little bit of an unusual situation and probably not the best analogy, but the only one I can think of is if a project were approved 10 years ago and then they came in today for a building permit, you wouldn't ask for the 2000... Or the building code that was in effect 10 years ago. You ask for the building effect today. So I believe we've gone through most of these, except to point out Astro Lane is not a public right of way. It's a metro district-owned street. It's owned by Twin Buttes. And there are four conditions of approval for the project. The first one relates to having a portion of the driveway on Lot 15B be preserved as a turnaround for emergency vehicles. The second condition, as I mentioned, is... Has to do with public improvements agreement if we need to get one and the associated financial guarantee. And then conditions three and four are standard. Future submittals shall comply with the applicable requirements of the LUDC and also that any verbal or graphic representations of the applicant shall be deemed conditions of approval. So the staff recommendation is slightly modified from your agenda document and I'll tell you what I have changed. So I'll just restart. Approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 15 preliminary minor subdivision consistent with the findings and conditions. This is the new part. So consistent with the findings and conditions. As stated in the staff report, direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat and milars once all necessary provisions are made.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I'm going to open the public testimony. Would the applicant like to say anything?
I have a report that if I say anything...
You have to cover the podium, Mr. Feeney. If you'd like to, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Rick Feeney, 1201 Main Avenue, Durango. I don't have a report that if I say verbally can be held against me, so my lawyer says I shouldn't say anything.
Okay.
If you guys have questions, fine. Otherwise, Mr. Williams said everything I think that needs to be said. I know you guys have lots to do, so I'm...
Well, thank you, sir. I'm going to... Thank you, sir. I'm gonna open the public testimony. I don't believe anyone signed up. I'm gonna close the public testimony. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have one question. I... The... I wanted to clarify whether the Twin Buttes design standards incorporated the guidelines from the sustainability plan that were discussed at the time of the approval. The... In particular, the... Those... That sustainability plan included a commitment to a HERS rating, which is an energy efficiency rating of 50 or less, to have every... Believe every building or certainly every residence be wired for possible solar installation. And I know there were others, but they... I don't have them all. You know, these were two that I specifically remembered and I just wanted to clarify the status of those...
Sure.
Those pieces of the plan.
So I'm on the Twin Buttes DRC. And what we've been doing is actually last year, no, probably 2017, we went through a process to find a comparable energy efficiency rating to the 50 HERS rating. And that is that any building that's built... Any house that's built now has to be at least as efficient as the 2015 building code. And we found that the 2015 building code is roughly equivalent to the 50-degree HERS rating. So every house that's been built so far or been permitted so far at Twin Buttes has been more efficient. One was really close. Some are as much as 10% more efficient than the 2015 building code. And the source for that is a federal Department of Energy program. It's called REDS check. And they have a formula where you feed in the size of the building, the amount of windows that you have, the size of what types of windows, what your insulation, your walls is, and what insulation in your ceilings are or is. And then it gives you a number. And so if your first crack at getting that is too high, then you have to go back to the drawing board and increase insulation or have a better U-rating for the windows or whatever you need to get to that number. And as far as the pre-wiring at DRC, we have not been requiring people to pre-wire. We've been asking that they do. And, you know, maybe that's something that we ought to require.
I think it would be worthwhile for staff to review the sustainability plan that was part of the Twin Buttes annexation and make sure that these guidelines are adhered here too. My recollection from our discussion of the 2015 Energy Conservation Code, and I may be mistaken about this, was that the code was not as rigid, as rigorous as the 20... The HERS rating of 50 standard. And I think it's the importance of energy efficiency in our building stock if we're gonna have any prayer of addressing our climate protection goals. We really need to make sure that the Twin Buttes and Three Springs, which are, you know, voluntarily agreed to higher standards than the existing building codes, are maintained and that the... Starting back last October, that new construction adheres to that 2015 code. I would add, since I probably not have another chance to say this, that the... We should continue to commit to our every... Our three-year updates to the most recent versions of the codes. I think the big jump was from 2009 to 2015. Hopefully... of the codes. I think the big jump was from 2009 to 2015. Hopefully, and we mindfully avoided jumping to 2018 in 2018, because I think it's a wise policy for the city to let others do the experimentations of being the first adopters, and find out, okay, where are the wrinkles? Can we make sure that we're getting the gains that we want without imposing undue hardship on our builders and buyers? So I think these, I can, I just simply cannot underscore how important building stock is to meeting climate protection goals. We've got so many old buildings that it's gonna be an enormous challenge to upgrade. But I think, you know, while we have the opportunity with new construction, we really have to be adhering to the highest standards we can.
Thank you, Councilor White. And I'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 15, preliminary minor subdivision, consistent with findings and conditions as stated in the staff report. Direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars, and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat and milars once all necessary revisions are made.
I'll second that.
A roll call, please. Mayor Proton Yusuf?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving into 8.2.2, a public hearing to consider a preliminary minor subdivision for Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 16.
This is right across the street. Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 16. So in case you forgot from 10 minutes ago, we're on Astrolane, right across the street. And on the east side of the street now, this is a little bit smaller of a lot. It's 14,000 square feet. This is the subdivision plat. And what's happening here is the applicant, Ian Baraklau, is going to build his personal residence on this lot. And on this lot, he's gonna build his house as well. He'll own this lot, but he'll rent the house out as a way to make some money. And one of the things that's good about this project is, because of the topography, there had to be sort of a creative solution for how some of the utilities and access were solved. So there's a shared driveway that goes through here. And so instead of having two curb cuts and two driveways full of asphalt, there's one driveway. And this house will come off here, and then the driveway goes a little bit farther back on the northern lot. And the applicant also plans to use some more permeable papers as opposed to asphalt or concrete, reducing the amount of impervious surface, which is something that we like at Twin Buttes. So as with Lot 15, Lot 16 can have two units. Different minimum lot size yet adopted at Twin Buttes. And that's something that they've been discussing, perhaps doing a 7,500 square foot minimum lot size. And then I mentioned, in the last project review, the Astrolane is a metro district road. And same six subdivision requirements. The subdivision conforms to the adopted plans and standards of the LUDC. It is compatible with the approved development, and specifically called out as being eligible for two units. Number three is not relevant, again. In addition, so number four, in addition to the shared driveway, we'll have to have an access easement. We also need to have shared drainage and shared sewer easement lines. And we'll get that either as a plat note or by separate document at the final plat review. So nothing too complicated, and everyone's aware that'll have to happen. Public facilities are adequate to serve the subdivision. And the impacts of the subdivision do not materially compromise the safety or welfare of the public. There are five conditions of approval. One is to have that shared access easement required for the shared driveway. One is to get a drainage easement for the shared drainage. The third is to get sewer easement for the sewer line, service line that'll cross two properties. And then the fourth and fifth are the standard conditions we have for every project review. So the staff recommendation is the same as the previous one, except instead of Lot 15, it's Lot 16. But it is, to approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 16, preliminary minor subdivision, consistent with the findings and conditions as stated in the staff report. Direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars, and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat and milars once all necessary revisions are made.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to say anything? Please introduce yourself with your name and address for the record.
Ian Baraklau, 45 Hay Barn Road. I just wanna thank Mr. Feeney and staff for coming up with a creative solution to that kind of tricky fire department turnaround issue. And I'm not, it's all been summarized. That was a good issue with some of the, some of the top graphical challenges that exist in Twin Buttes. So, thank you.
Thank you so kindly. I will open the public testimony. Would anyone, I don't think anyone signed up, so I'm gonna close the public testimony. And any comments from city council?
I have a question. And it actually relates to the testimony in the, in front of the Planning Commission, and a question by Chair Lewandowski about the ADUs. And this is not specific to really the issue we're talking about. But he asked in the, in the Planning Commission minutes, it's noted here that he asked about ADUs on the site, the previous site. And that the answer was that there, these lots weren't big enough for the ADU. And then that the development didn't permit on-street parking, which was news to me, because I was involved in the, in the approval of Twin Buttes. So, Mark, if you wouldn't mind commenting, I'm wondering if that's gonna be an impediment to further ADUs in that community going forward?
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's true on all streets. I think there are, there is on-street parking on, streets that are, city streets that are built to city standards, if I'm not mistaken. This is, as I mentioned, a metro district, metro district street, and it was built to a smaller standard. So there's not as much room for parking on-street. And some of the reasons for that are the topography that Ian just alluded to. But if you are gonna have an ADU, one of the basic requirements is you need to be able to park it on your own property. So if someone wants to have an ADU, we wanna work with them to make sure we can get one. And if we start running into issues, it's certainly something that we can revisit, because any solution for Twin Buttes is specific to Twin Buttes. So we can incorporate it into their codes and standards, or their, even their development agreement. If it becomes an issue, then it's something that we'll have to address.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't had any applications for one yet, so we don't know.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'll look for a motion from council.
I'll make a motion to approve the Twin Buttes Phase 1 filing 1A Lot 16, preliminary minor subdivision, consistent with the findings and conditions as stated in the staff report. Direct the applicant to prepare the final plat and milars, and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat and milars once all necessary revisions are made.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Mayor Proton Yusuf?
Yes.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
And I would like to pose an informational question. I assume that's Miss Mayor Marbury that would be signing the documents, even if that happens, you know, since the, well, I guess that would occur very soon. But I was just curious, since our terms are under...
Right.
Who, which mayor would be responsible for signing, depending on the time?
It's approved by, we're just trying to get it done during our...
That's great. All right. Thank you so much. We'll be moving on to 8.2.3, a public hearing to consider a proposal from Volunteers of America for a preliminary plan plat for Lot 1 of Three Springs Village 1, filing 2A, in order to facilitate development of a 53-unit senior affordable housing building. Staff, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Scott Shine with Community Development. And this slide gives you a little summary of the project that's before you tonight. We feel like it's an exciting project for a couple of reasons. It's one of the first major developments along Wilson Gold's Road, which was a great public-private partnership to build that road connecting to the hospital, Three Springs, and the highway. Also, it will be housing for a very vulnerable population in our community, low-income seniors. It's a big need in our community, and we're excited to be able to be a partner in this project with Volunteers of America. And they have some representation from Russell Planning Engineering and Ecker Architecture. So it's 53 units and has some, some nice amenities. I thought before we jumped into the specifics of this project, it would be important to step back a little bit, refresh our collective memories about the housing plan that was adopted in January of 2018. I think most of you will remember that was a two-year process with an advisory committee, a lot of public input on that document. And we came out of that, and Mark Williams, who just presented, was the lead staff on that and did a great job, came up with six primary policy goals. And this project really helps to achieve two of those six goals related to affordable housing opportunities in the community. So a direct quote from that plan is, the city's goal is to have 1,000 housing units with long-term affordability by 2040. And you can see here, the quick inventory that we did in preparation of that plan, we had 435 units existing. Since that time, you've approved Lumion Phase 2, which is another 36 units. And pending approval, this BOA project will add 53 more long-term affordable units to the community's housing stock. And that puts us over halfway towards that goal, which with 20 more years to go is promising and exciting to sort of track that progress and see that we're moving in the right direction. So as we look at these projects, I just wanna make sure we're keeping track of all those units and those metrics that we put into these plans to make sure we're moving in the right direction. So just a refresher there on the housing plan. The other thing that I think it's important to point out is, by the time these projects get to council or even Planning Commission, there's a lot of background work that has been done to try and facilitate projects that we feel are needed in the community, that are good for the community, that align with these adopted plans and policy direction from council, from the Planning Commission. And so a lot of work has gone into this over the past three, four years. Partnering with Three Springs, Assistant City Manager Kevin Hall renegotiated their affordable housing agreement. And this was part of that renegotiation, was to get this land dedicated to the city. And then we've conveyed, will, pending approval, will convey that to BOA for affordable housing. So we have a lot of other things we wanna do related to housing and spurring more housing opportunities in the community. But a lot of work is already happening, even with not a lot of resources yet, or not a lot of money, or things like that. We're able to do creative things to bring projects that we feel are important. So there's just an outline of that process. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that. BOA applied in 2017 for tax credits from the state. They didn't get it that time, but they got it this past year in the fall. And we've been pressing forward after they got that award to move forward with the, with the project. So that's the, the big picture summary. And now I'll sort of drill into the specifics of the project.
Before you go on, could I ask a question?
Yep.
You said this addresses two of the goals of the housing plan. I thought you only mentioned one.
I did, yeah. So the one goal is make 1,000 housing units long-term affordable. The other is just increase affordable housing options for all residents. And so by having more supply, we feel like that's accomplishing. Thank you. So like I said, it's along Wilson Gold's Road, just south of the hospital. It's a blank canvas today. Across the street is the police substation. And there's also a lot owned by DFPD that could be a fire substation in the future. This is the preliminary plan that's currently in place for Three Springs. The different colors obviously represent different land uses. Part of this review and approval is to redesignate this lot from what it's currently designated as, is referred to as a traditional urban village lot, and to move it into what's called a variable lot. That lot type in Three Springs has a little bit more flexibility as far as dimensional standards, setbacks, heights, things like that. And so it's needed to accommodate the project as designed and submit it. So that's part of this review and approval. The other part is this minor subdivision. You can see the lot, line right down the middle will create these two lots. And then there's a little sliver towards the north of the property that will be dedicated as right-of-way, to make sure the sidewalk along Wilson Gold's will be in the right-of-way. So really, those two things are what's before council tonight. Those are the formal review and the action you'll need to take. There's also a review process that we have called major site plan review for buildings that are over 10,000 square feet. The final decision-making authority for major site plan review is Planning Commission. So they've already heard that review, and they've unanimously recommend, or unanimously approved the major site plan review. Obviously, because we're here tonight, we're gonna show you some of those elements, show you what the site looks like. But the formal action is just on the preliminary plan and subdivision, just for clarification. So following the subdivision, you can see this eastern half of the lot will be the first phase of the project. The parking to the south, sort of an entry drive north-south off of Wilson Gold's Road. That'll be what we call a full movement access. Left turns in and out of that access. The connection on the south to Owen Road in the Ranch of Addado subdivision, that'll be a gated emergency access for now. In the future, that may get reconfigured, and especially as traffic increases along Wilson Gold's Road, we may wanna convert that access into a more restricted access, like what we call a right-in, right-out access, and then open up that other one. But right now, that connection through on Owen Road is not built yet. So that's the reason the access is configured that way. You can see the building footprint along the northern property line, and then some nice amenity space that I'll talk about. And I'm sure the applicant will talk about a little bit more, sort of southern exposure amenity space in between the parking lot and building. Here are some updated renderings of the building. This is looking from Wilson Gold's Road, kind of to the southeast. Part of the Planning Commission review had some conditions about the building design. And like I said, this is one of the first major developments along Wilson Gold's. So we want to be very attentive to the design and make sure it sets a good standard for that corridor. And so they've worked, they've made some adjustments. It's come quite a ways. There's an additional step after this review for final approval by the Three Springs Design Review Committee. And at that time, the final building design will be reviewed. We'll make sure all the Planning Commission conditions of approval have been met as well. But it's getting very close. Again, the applicant and their representatives can speak more to that. This is looking back kind of toward the southwest. So that's along the Wilson Gold's frontage there. They've done some things to add brick, diversity of materials, and then break up the building mass by stepping the wall plane there. I believe there's also some solar efficiencies by, by doing that. That's, that's the latest building design. Like I said, they have some site amenities, some garden beds, some outdoor patio space for the residents. There's rumor that they may even build a pickleball court on their site, which I know a lot of people are really excited about having pickleball right out their front door. So overall, really well-designed site, well-landscaped. And like I said, Planning Commission reviewed all these aspects of the site plan. They had some conditions, but it was unanimously approved at their February meeting. We're in sort of the iteration phase right now. They're taking these comments and making some updates to their plans. And we'll do a final review pending the outcome of this meeting. Maybe I could stop there, and maybe you could ask if the applicant wants to speak and we can talk about the motion.
Would the applicant like to come to the podium? Please introduce yourself to, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and community members. I'm Doug Snyder from Denver, Senior Development Director for Volunteers of America. I also put together a few slides to update you this evening. I also put together a few slides to update you this evening on our progress. Of course, you all know where the location is, Three Springs. And there's a slide that shows the configuration of the full buildout, including the second phase, which will be approximately 50 to 60 units. We're putting all the office and amenities and infrastructure in phase one, so the second phase can be solid apartments essentially. Scott previewed the elevations, just had some trees dropped in. Yeah, the team's been working hard on it, and we're Three Springs DRC Thursday. Scott shared that with you also. Here's a quick shot of the interior lobby, community area. We'll have common area tables for social gatherings. We'll have a piano in there, a little kitchenette. This will be right off the main entrance to the building. The staff offices will be tucked to the front corner of the building, and then we'll have restroom and a service coordinator office to the side of this area. As Scott mentioned, it's going to mainly be one bedrooms. There's going to be 49 one bedrooms and four two bedrooms. This is going to be our main unit. We think it's going to be a great seller at 650 square feet, which is generous for one bedroom. You can see in the lower-left corner there, that's a laundry storage room, so every unit's going to have their own laundry, and it's going to be side-by-side, which will be easy for the seniors to reach. And then the kitchen's going to be an open floor plan rather than doing like a bar top. We found that seniors like to have their own tables in their units, so this plan allows for that. And just to refresh, I presented this when I was with you a year ago, exclusively seniors. I think you know the data points. We have indoor and outdoor many areas. It's really ideal the way it's laid out because everything faces south. They're going to have a big wall, nice glass there, get all the sunlight in there in the winter. Warmer months, they'll spill out the patio, and then for safety and access, it's terrific too, because the sun will melt the snow and the ice off the parking lot to help the seniors get around. Every year, had adjust the median income and rents, and they've ticked up slightly from what I presented last year. So we're, you can see, 16,000 to 37,000 is the AMI range, and the rents go from 441,000 to 1,060, with the two-bedroom 60% unit being on the top end, and the 30% one-bedrooms being on the low end and everything in between. Again, it's service-rich housing, we'll have a half-time service coordinator. If the budget allows, we'll bring that into a full-time position. At the minimum, when the second phase comes on, we'll have a full-time service coordinator there to coordinate all the other agencies, activities, the Durango Senior Center, potentially partnerships with Mercy Regional Medical Center. I met with them this morning, continue to discuss those partnerships, keep the seniors healthy, bring that preventative, healthy program into the building. They have some good ideas. And then partners, we've got our team selected. We're going to have Wells Fargo again do another act of doing Lumion projects. They're going to do the construction loan, the equity for our project. And timeline, just to pick up on what Scott said, currently, we're finalizing our plat subdivision in front of you this evening. Site plan, construction documents, and working towards our building permit. Financial closing, I'm targeting May 15th, so we're working real hard to hit that date, and we get a little closer, we can maybe zero in on a groundbreaking date. Construction start soon thereafter. I met with FCI today, and they're anxious to get going and get started, and they have a great team lined up for our project. So it'll be about a 12, 13-month build, depending on the weather, and snow and so forth. And then second half of next year, we'll target our lease-up, and then we'll convert to the perm loan early in 2021 and go to stabilized operations. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. I will open it up to public testimony. I don't see any, so I'm going to close public testimony. Comments and questions from council?
Dean, you were going to say? Oh, I was just going to say that this is a perfect example of a public-private partnership in that the city of Durango received this land in a negotiation originally with Three Springs.
Three Springs.
And then we were able to offer that as a partner in, the city being a partner in the eventual fruition of these senior housing units, low-income housing units. So it's another way that the city's participating, and as was presented by staff, that we're achieving our housing goals every day, every year.
Any other comments?
Just a couple of questions. When did you expect Phase Two to start?
So, let's see, we're in 19, we'll build 19, 20, lease-up late 20, maybe into early 21, convert to our perm loan in 21. So early indications is we'd apply for tax credits beginning in 2022, and it'll be typically a second phase of a project, so a little bit easier of an ask because you've got all your costs, your rents, your expenses, and presumably we'll have a nice waitlist that we'll develop. And so when we go into our request for tax credits, that always looks good, you know, if we have an 80, 100-person waitlist. So 2022 is what I'm anticipating.
And when will you start a waitlist for this first phase?
Well, we have Cedar View One and Two here in town, so we can begin some preliminary information sharing. Typically, about 90 days before we open a building, we'll really crank up the marketing, but in this case, since we have buildings, you know, staff over there can start taking names and phone numbers and so forth immediately.
Right, okay, then, okay. And super basic question for you. What is the, what is your definition then of senior that would be able to qualify for this type of housing?
It ties to the tax exemption, and we're going to be able to secure that, and I think it's going to be 55.
At that age?
Yeah.
Really, I want to tell you how much this means to the city of Durango. Several of us have been involved with this project for many years, and I'm so happy that you received the Lytec application and funding. This means a lot to the city of Durango to go towards our housing stock increasing. It's in the right place, it's the right time, and I really want to salute you. It takes time, and that's something that we learn patience up here on the dais, and so we really appreciate the time and effort that you and the staff have put into this project. With that, I will look for a motion.
Is the motion as it was presented in the documentation? Okay. Motion to approve the request from Volunteers of America for a preliminary plan/plat for Lot One of Three Springs Village One, filing 2A in order to facilitate development of a 53-unit senior affordable housing building, and authorize the mayor to sign the final plat prior to recordation.
Second.
Roll call, please. Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
Moving into 11.1, discussion and possible action concerning approval of a modification to the purchase option agreement between the city of Durango and Volunteers of America for a 3.1-acre parcel in Three Springs to be used for low-income senior housing. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Good evening again, Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. So what we have before you now is kind of the next step in what was just approved. So we took that 3.1 acres and we just proved, split it in half. What we had in place prior to the split was one purchase option agreement that was contingent upon certainly the award of a low-income housing tax credit, as well as an approved project. We're quickly moving towards the approval being all complete. We needed to subdivide the property so Phase Two could come. When we first entered into this in 17, we weren't talking phases at that point. What we were talking about is securing the three acres for senior housing, but as we continued to talk, it was clear that two phases was going to work better for BOA. So we're at a point now where the discussion on the split is occurring. So now what we essentially need is two purchase option agreements. The project that is slated for being in construction here shortly, we're essentially going to create an amendment to the existing purchase option agreement that just extends it. And we're going to give them six months on here, under all the same conditions. I would say the caveat there is it's likely we will convert this to an actual purchase agreement, a contract here shortly, so we probably won't use that six months, but we'll move into a contracting situation so that when the timing is right, the property will transfer of just the one-half of this 3.1 acres, so they can move ahead with the development of the project. In the meantime, we will create a new purchase option agreement that essentially emulates the original agreement, but it's for the second parcel that we just had approval on tonight. The difference between the original and this one is we're going to put a five-year window on it, and Mr. Snyder just spoke to kind of the timing on construction, and well, they'll get to the point of going into permanent financing, and then you look at the opportunities to get into another Lytec application, go through the same process that we just went through. It's probably a five-year window. I think we're comfortable with that, given where we're at today. You know, as Counselor Broke pointed out, this property came to the city by way of the Three Springs development. It had a kind of a long and winding road to go from an open-space parcel originally that then proved to dry up in terms of wetlands. Three Springs came back to us, said, "Let's trade." So we got this property out of open space. We have a commitment for another three acres of open space when they move into Village Two, which will happen probably in the next couple of years. And then we'll identify that acreage that would trade for this. Then this property became available, and as we worked through, as you will recall, most of you will recall, we went through a pretty extensive process on the revision to the compliance agreement for affordable, attainable housing in Three Springs two years ago. This parcel was a key component of that. They'll be receiving credits for these units as part of their overall commitment, compliance agreement. So really, what we have before you is we need to have the contracts ratified by the city council and direct the city manager and city attorney to kind of square that all away, get them executed so we can continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I have to say that we have a really good staff, working with developers, working with architects, working behind the scenes. It's a process that has worked for the city of Durango. It does take time, but the staff is very successful in the process. So my compliments to the staff, to Mr. Snyder, and to the architects, and the future of these wonderful projects for the city of Durango. Any questions or comments?
I just have one question. The initial POA for the, when it was just going to be one phase, what was the window on that one? Do you remember? I assume this is lengthy.
I think it was a couple of years.
I think it was two years.
Probably two years.
Yeah, it was.
And it gave, yeah, and thank, now I'm remembering. So what we wanted to do is give them two kind of cracks at the Lytec application.
Right.
And the first opportunity didn't work out, the second one did, so it was approximately two years.
Okay.
And then we amended it a couple of times to actually extend it in order to, for the process to move forward and maintain the first position, if you will, on the property for BOA.
So it makes sense, based on the success of everything that we see happening there, to look down the path and extend that purchase option agreement a little longer through the course of potential construction.
And I believe it was December of last year where we did the additional extension on the larger purchase option, the original purchase option.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm reminded that the, when they first applied for the Lytec with the low-income housing tax credits, they didn't get it, but Lumion Two did. So we've been very successful as a community to have a series of successful applications for low-income housing tax credits, and I hope that Phase Two will enjoy the same success after the permanent supportive housing proposal.
With that, I will ask for a recommendation. Motion?
I think we need two motions, but I'll offer, make the motion that we move that we execute the Third Amendment to the BOA Purchase Option Agreement for Lot 1A of the Three Springs Lot One subdivision for purposes of developing senior and low-income housing.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please. Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
And for the second?
And I will also move to execute the BOA Purchase Option Agreement for Lot 1B of Three Springs Lot One subdivision for the purposes of developing senior low-income housing.
I'll second that again.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bettin?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. We're moving into council reports and actions, and so I'll be, Counselor Bettin?
Yes, as the city's liaison to the Parks and Rec Board, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. This came around fast for me. I know when we talked about it in the Parks and Rec Board meeting the other night, but Lake Night Horse is opening up again, which is exciting. The community went through a 40-year planning process to get to the point of opening it last year, and here we are in year two. So just wanted to make a couple announcements. March 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is the Kids Fish First Free Event, which is hard to say, which will be exciting. There's still some big lunkers in there, I understand. And then on March 31st at 9:00 a.m., the opening day for non-motorized recreation from 9:00 to 4:00. April 5th to 28th, it'll be open only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 9:00 to 4:00. And May 1st is the opening daily for the season, and then May 15th is the motorized recreation start date. For the current schedule and more details on the city website, you can get it at durangogov.org/laknighthorse. Season and punch passes are available now at the recreation center. Can be purchased at the lake, once it opens, same price as last year. Snow increased there. And facility improvements this year include an ADA fishing pier and a small boat launch picnic shelter with tables and water well for boat decontaminations. Just a reminder, the funding for this facility, facility improvements are split 50/50 with the Bureau of Reclamation and the city using the 2015 half-cent sales tax. And I just have a couple more comments about that, actually, in general, if you don't mind, Mayor, for me to take up just a little bit more time, for my little facts for your consideration, very much like I presented last time. Since we were talking about the Parks and Rec tax, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear. Sometimes information gets disseminated out in the community that we see that may or may not be accurate, and one of the things that you may have seen is that there's a suggestion that the council has a choice to reallocate the funds for either the 2005 or 2015 sales tax that went to Parks and Recreation, open space funding, capital improvements for those amenities. And what we really need to happen, if indeed we decided that that was a path that the community wanted to take, would be that we would actually have to go back to the voters to have that approved. And since both of those tax initiatives were actually citizen-led initiatives that were extremely popular, they won in landslide elections. I believe the margin was something like 70, 30 for both of those. It is interesting to consider that, and one of the considerations that this council made in the direction that we have taken for your consideration is that many feel that it's unlikely for the community to go back and reallocate those funds. If we do have to do that, and they decide that that's not a good path, then we're sort of left with no opportunity to fix the general fund, which is what the conversation is about relative to 1A. So I just wanted to clear that up. It's not really a council decision because of Tabor. One of the benefits the community has in Tabor is that you get to decide whether or not we need to increase taxes of any kind to pay for city services, and/or if indeed it is a community decision to go forward and reallocate, that would be a decision that our community would have to make by a ballot decision. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I was asked, just wanted to update council, to be a host for Building a Better Colorado, which is a nonpartisan statewide conversation among community leaders in 37 communities now in the state of Colorado, to explore opportunities for improving Colorado's fiscal policy to support our Colorado way of life. So right now, what we are doing is identifying, the hosts that have been asked to participate are working on identifying members of our community to engage in that conversation around fiscal policy, and we're setting, we're in the process of setting up meetings and identifying those community members. We are making recommendations. We are making recommendations on who should be included. So I wanted to let you know that I'm actively participating in that. And I also wanted to let you know that we had a very well-attended alliance investor meeting last week, a full La Plata County Fairground meeting room for that. And we have two executive director candidates that we are moving forward with interviewing. And I wasn't sure if our city manager might want to give any more update than that. Our city manager is on the search committee for that alliance. I don't know if we have a date set?
I don't think that the date's set at this point in time.
Okay, within the next couple of weeks, correct?
Correct.
So we're actively moving forward with that, which is really good news.
Counselor Brookie?
I just returned from the Colorado Association of Ski Town meeting, so I continue to serve on that executive committee. And it was this year at the Colorado Municipal League building. And it happened to be Sam Mamet, the executive director of Colorado Municipal League, has, is retiring at the end of this month. So first, we were able to say goodbye to Sam and with appropriate wishes. He's been on, in that job, representing communities throughout the state for 38 years, and, which is a real hot seat job, that he's been managed to keep an even keel. And as I told Sammy, represents all four corners of the state of Colorado, but thankfully he likes ours best, four corners. Followed by that, we had lunch with the new governor, Jared Polis. And he hit on three, or three basic items. Of course, he was talking to a group of ski towns, mayors and city managers from ski towns. And he recognized that Colorado has, is largely a Colorado, is a recreation-based economy. And in that, those economies are climate-dependent industries. And so his goal is to have by year 2040, all renewable energy in the state of Colorado. So that was, that was good news, supports a number of the things that the city of Durango is doing as well. He also talked about the health reinsurance bill to provide, bring hopefully more affordable insurance rates to western Colorado. And then he ended with the free full-day kindergarten that we've seen in the news lately. And of course, that's a huge problem in our community as well. And statewide, that and all, in addition to providing free kindergarten, it also frees up a lot of preschool spots that are, would be opened up by the issuance of free kindergarten. With that, then we talked, the main gist of the meeting was the overuse and overcrowding of recreational facilities throughout the state. And we had a number of speakers talk about everything from Hanging Lake on I-70 and how that's now having to be permitted to be able to go there and get a transit ride from Glenwood Springs up to that facility instead of just parking. It's, they've had lines in special parking and all that kind of thing. Some of the same stresses that we're encountering on facilities in the city, in and around the city of Durango, on a more minor scale. So another interesting thing was that with the fire impact, a number of communities throughout our states are funding fire mitigation. Steamboat Springs uses lodgers' tax funds to pay for fire mitigation. Summit County issued a tax, and voters paid for a tax for $1 million a year to be used for fire protection. $200,000 annually goes to the Forest Service directly from a, from a sales tax that goes to strictly for fire mitigation and help the Forest Service out, do forest management in direct contact with those communities. So it's interesting to see how all the stresses that other recreation-based economies are having throughout our state. And here, we're just trying to get our roads fixed, number one. And fortunately, it just came to light that Trails 2000 is such a great partner in our community. For a very, very modest cost, we have maintenance of trail, those trails that intersect to and through our community, bike trails, hiking, biking, pedestrian trails, and that come to us for a fraction of the cost that comes to other recreation-based communities throughout the state.
Thank you. Were you going to report on the airport?
Oh, tomorrow.
Thursday?
Thursday. It's almost tomorrow. Thank you. Get an extra day. Thursday at 1:30 will be a groundbreaking for our new terminal improvements. It's close to $1 million worth of terminal improvements. Largely, the baggage carousel area will be expanded, as well as the backroom space, if you call it that, for baggage handling and more efficient handling of our luggage. And that will happen at 1:30. If anybody cares to come out there, I'm sure we'll have some non-alcoholic to drink.
Thank you very much. I look forward to Thursday at the airport. And Counselor White?
I'm sorry, don't have anything quite as exciting as Counselor Brookie. I did want to mention that I have, some time ago volunteered to be one of the participants for the Building a Better Colorado. I attended the focus group that they did here a couple of years ago. And it's seeking bipartisan support for ways of approaching the challenges that we face statewide with, with our fiscal situation. I mainly want to say I've got two more here-to-hear sessions on this Thursday and next, and I will not be doing it in April, so these are the last two occasions. I've got a few upcoming events that I do think are worth mentioning. On Saturday, the 23rd, this upcoming Saturday, there's a presentation entitled Climate and Energy 101. There are some presentations, panel discussion, I think some general discussion. I have agreed to serve on a, as part of the panel discussion. Next Monday, the Good Food Collective is showing a film on food insecurity in Noble 130, starting at 6:00 p.m. The film is called A Place at the Table. There will be a panel discussion and open conversation following that. Food insecurity affects 49 million Americans, 13% of our population in La Plata County, and 28% of Fort Lewis college students. The food insecurity among college students is one of those under-the-radar issues. Next week, Green Drinks on Thursday evening. Tuesday, the 2nd, San Juan Basin Public Health is doing a report on their five-year public health improvement plan. There's an open house, including appetizers, starting at 4:30 at, I believe it's the Rec Center, I didn't make a note of that, with a formal presentation at 5:00. Tuesday, the 2nd, of course, is Election Day. Please vote. I'm happy to say I dropped off my ballot at the courthouse on my way over here tonight. And finally, a very important opportunity for housing vouchers. Southwest Center for Independence is opening up their voucher waitlist for one day, April 4th. If you're, if you are in a position where that might help you, contact the Southwest Center for Independence for details.
Thank you. I've asked the city manager to give us a report on sales tax and lodgers' tax. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is our February monthly report, so it reflects January's sales. And I'm pleased to report that sales tax was up 2.3% for the month, and it is now up 0.8% year-to-date. Lodgers' tax was up for the month, 21.5%, and that brings it to 12% up year-to-date. I also had some other items you had asked me about. Even though we're just recovering from shoveling snow, we are in the process of scheduling our spring seasonal cleanup. And you can find all the details to that program online on the city's website. But beginning the week of April 8th, we will start the spring cleanup. And during the spring, we accept furniture, large appliances, scrap metal, drywall, fencing, carpeting, tiles, open dry cans of paint, tree trimmings, branches less than eight feet in length and eight inches in diameter, bagged or boxed loose brush and leaves. And we need to separate the yard waste from the scrap metal. So it's usually a bigger pile in the spring. There are also some frequently asked questions about how do we do this? The street department suggests that you place the material in the curb line, not in the planter strip, and not on private property. And if your pickup is in the alley, you should place that in a serviceable pile that won't obstruct traffic. Some of us may be concerned that there still will be snow piles in the street. And if that is your situation, place your materials for the spring cleanup on the street side of the snow pile, and we will pick it up. You don't have to remove doors from freezers or refrigerators, and we don't accept asphalt shingles. Some people have experienced some roof damage during the winter from ice dams and so forth. So asphalt shingles should be the responsibility of your contractor. And then if I could move on to another topic that's on everybody's mind. We're doing the best we can in keeping up with potholes, but this was a very unusual winter, and we frankly are not able to keep up with the maintenance on potholes. I think the council understands that we have a pavement condition index that documents the condition of every street. We do our best to prioritize where the crews are going for pothole patching, based on traffic counts and activity in those streets. But the physical activity of replacing a pothole when it's cold means those temporary potholes pop out. I have a favorite pothole on Third Avenue that I drive over every day. And that pothole gets replaced somewhere between every three to six days. It gets a lot of activity. But I thought I'd put some numbers to that. So to date in 2019, we've patched 682 potholes, and we've used 37 tons of patching material. Again, we don't have access to asphalt plants because it's too cold for them to open up. And we do the best we can with what we call a temporary cold mix. The larger patches that we put in have a short lifetime that they can pop out quite easily. So physically, if there's water in the bottom of the hole, basically, and we put the material in, that water's going to freeze and thaw, and helps loosen as you drive over it. So we're doing the best we can. Obviously, this is a year where we don't have the budget to cover all of our expenses, and it's up to the city staff at this point to manage within our means, which is what we do. We don't have a contingency account. We don't have an adequate unallocated fund balance. So among all the departments, we meet once a week, and we talk about where we are with the budget. We had a meeting this morning. We meet every Tuesday. So we're trying to stay on top of it. We're not trying to panic. But I think later in the year, we'll have a better picture of what the prognosis is for sales tax and what our expenses have been for the winter. Most of the expense on snow removal that we can't control is related to the number of trucks that haul snow, particularly from the downtown area and North Main. We also have to hire a bulldozer for the snow dump. So as we dump the snow, we have to push it into a bigger and bigger pile. And that is located now in the tech center. That was a purchase this council made a couple of years back. And actually, it's the first winter that we're really using the site. So we're getting our money's worth on that good investment. So we're doing the best we can, and I will continue to relate that to the public and to the council. And we'll continue. That's part of the challenge of running a city.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about street trees. There's been a lot of broken trees all over Durango. Street trees are ones that the city maintains, and they are in front of the sidewalks. And so the Parks Department goes by, and it's paid through by the 2015 sales tax for our trees. When they are picking up, or they're cutting, or they're dangerously have been destroyed from the winter, be sure that you call in if you have a street tree that is, you see a hanging limb. We don't want it to fall on your car or on someone. So let the city Parks Department know about it. Thank you.
Could I add to that? I forgot you had asked about tree limbs. There are a lot of damaged trees. We not only had some heavy wet snow. We did have a wind event a couple of weeks ago that caused some significant damage. So in some cases, as the mayor indicated, our Parks Department has trimmed that material. We can't keep up with the chipping, so there may be piles in your neighborhood. If you have tree limbs on your property that require you to limb up and take down, please feel free to add those limbs to the piles. If there's a pile next to you and on your block, go ahead and do that, and we'll pick it up with the spring cleanup.
Thank you very much. I wanted to remind our community that CDOT is making a heavy investment on streets of 17th, 22nd, and 32nd. So we've seen the CDOT crews work diligently through this hard winter, and on 17th, we're starting to see some of those great results. So just keep your eyes open for the wonderful CDOT crews. The bid, the Business Improvement District, sent me some information that there was a 40% increase at the Welcome Center in January that may account for our lodgers' tax and our little bump in sales tax. Also, on North Main, Byrd's, a new restaurant, will be opening in May, and Zia should be breaking ground in May around 30th Street. There'll be a May 4th, North Main event, which encompasses Streets 26 through 30th. So stay tuned for more activities. I'm on the library board as a liaison, and I'd like to remind everyone that on April the 11th, we have a 5:30 reception and also an author at our literary festival. So be sure and come and join us on April the 11th at the library. I'm also on the natural lands board, and we were talking about the Oxbo Park, the Enemas River Trail. The construction has begun at really both ends. The contracts have been issued, and so they will begin working down by the Oxbo, as well as the streets involved, and meet somewhere in the middle. And it should be finished in around 2020. And just to give you a heads up, I went to meetings in 2010 concerning this Enemas River Trail. So I'm so happy to see this moving forward. It's only nine or 10 years later that life is really making that happen for us. And that is the information that we'd like to share with you from the, oh, I forgot. There's an election going on. We want to encourage everyone to go vote. This is the ballot language for 1A. And if you haven't received your ballot, please check with the clerk's office. 1A says, "Shall the city of Durango taxes be increased not more than $4,686,000 in the first full fiscal year of collections?" And that's Tabor language. "And by whatever amounts are generated annually from an additional sales and use tax of not more than 0.5% to be imposed beginning July 1, 2019, for the purposes of funding the construction, operation, and maintenance of streets, alleys, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and related street improvements, with proposed expenditures being first submitted to a citizen advisory board for a recommendation to city council, provided that these increased taxes shall not be collected after June 30, 2029." It's a 10-year term. And with that, we're going to close. Thank you all for attending the March 19th city council meeting. We'll see you in April. Thank you.